Everybody, thanks for joining us. We're gonna call the meeting to order. The meeting of September ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. All members are present here this evening. If you would please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and welcome back to everybody. Our first meeting in September after what was another quick summer. Our summer schedule, we're back on track here for every other Monday. So, good evening and thanks for joining us. I first want to point out that thanks to a great suggestion from my colleague, Ms. Miselli, all the members are sporting something gold this evening in honor of Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. So, thank you all and thank you for the suggestion. We do, next up, we have transmitting of Treasury warrants. We have Treasury warrant two five zero eight, two five zero eight W, two five zero eight T, two five eight S, two five zero nine W, two five zero nine T, two five zero nine S, two five one zero, two five one zero W, and two five one zero T. Is there a motion?
I propose you to approve all.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? It is unanimous. Mr. Slagel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd be looking for a motion to approve Treasury warrant two five zero nine.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor? It's four zero. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We don't have any approval of any minutes this evening, so we'll move right into our first appointment. Seven P. M. We have Jim Lesbia-ia, excuse me, if you want to help me pronounce it?
Lespazio.
Lespazio, thank you, sir. Do you want to come forward? Mr. Lespazio is the general manager of In the Mix Beverage Catering. And tonight, it appears he's joined by Mr. Giroux for a request to obtain a one-day alcohol license to sell beer and wine at the Fall Fest for the property located at one forty-two Middlesex Avenue. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, and thank you for your attention.
If you don't mind, just again, your names for the record, although we are well aware of Mr. Giroux. Just for the record, please.
Jim Lespazio, L. E. S. P. A. S. I. O.
Thank you.
And I am Patrick Giroux. I am the chairman of the Wilmington Fourth of July Committee. I'll turn it over to Jim in just a moment. As the organizing group that is looking to bring in Jim and his services for our event, I thought I would just give you a quick minute to kind of talk about what we're looking to do, and then I will certainly pass it over to the reason we're here tonight, and that is to hear a little bit about Jim, his operation, and how he is looking to enhance our event. So, as you all know, we've been in front of this board a couple times for our Fall Fest approval. Fall Fest is Saturday, September twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. And the Fall Fest has previously been approved by the board, and throughout the last couple of months, our committee has been looking for some new potential ways to enhance the event. Of course, the event, you know, was a great success in year one last year. We're certainly looking forward to year two. And being a New England fall fun, you know, event for, you know, many ages, we're looking to enhance it with beer and wine sales. So, the committee has met with the Wilmington Police Department to talk about, I'm sorry. Sorry, I thought you said something. The committee's met with the Wilmington Police Department to iron out the logistics. We believe we have a pretty good plan in place. We've received their unwavering support for this juncture. So, our plan here is to have the beer and wine sales in the municipal parking lot. You know, a reminder that Fall Fest takes place in the municipal parking lot as well as the town common. And the committee interviewed several vendors throughout the last couple of months to try and come to a good agreement on, you know, logistics and certainly safety with such endeavor. And ultimately, we selected In the Mix for which we're here tonight to hear a little bit about, and then also the event in itself. So, I'm gonna pass it off to Jim, who has plenty of experience, you know, in front of these municipal boards to seek these types of permit approvals and hear a little bit about him.
Thank you, Patrick. So, In the Mix is a seven, almost eight-year-old company. I joined in two thousand and nineteen. My background was in technology, and then I was a restaurateur for twelve years. The company is owned, we're female-owned. A woman happens to be a good friend of mine, and I've been with her since two thousand and nineteen. I was fortunate enough to sell my restaurant just before COVID. And so, this is my semi-retirement gig. We do over a hundred events a year, mostly private weddings, house parties, a lot of corporate work as well. But we do, you know, we're sort of the de facto provider for liquor for the town of Burlington. They've got an event center there, and we're the first ones they call. And I've done a number of events for the town of Arlington as well for the different fundraising charities that they offer, the Touchdown Club and the Fidelity House Project. They constantly looking to raise money, so they gave us a call. We have three full-time employees, but on any given day, we can get twenty bartenders because we're all in the restaurant business, so we know people that are in our industry. And we support up to four different events in a single day. Certainly, on the twenty-eighth, we're not taking any other events. We're going to be hunkered down here with you all. And Pat just gave me a preview of where everything was gonna be set up. I just came from the venue, and it looks like there's plenty of space there for us. We're thinking right now we're going to have at least three bar stations selling just beer and wine. The beer will be nothing above five percent alcohol by volume. There's a lot of beers out there that are very high alcohol. That's what the young kids like. That's not what we like. And we're gonna have a max of three drinks per person. And anybody who orders a beer has to be in front of us so that we can ID them, just like you would at any concession in Fenway or anywhere else. So, we're really looking forward to it, and I hope tonight we can get your approval.
Thank you, Jim. Yes, so in terms of logistics, Jim mentioned all of his staff are certified bartenders. They're all tip-certified. There is a three-drink max per, you know, consumer that walks up. They will all be IDed each point of transaction. You know, every time they want to purchase something, Jim's team will be IDing. Everything will be poured in a clear plastic cup. That was something we discussed heavily with the police department, as well as reducing refuse throughout the event. We certainly don't want, you know, glass and cans and things of that nature. There will be a no-consumption area. You know, everything beyond the limits of the municipal parking lot is non-consumption. Consumption is to be in the municipal parking lot only. In conjunction with the police department, we have a pretty robust fencing plan that will be setting up for this with, you know, specific signage that says, you know, no alcoholic beverages permitted beyond this point, in addition to public safety officials, you know, standing at those areas to make sure folks are not leaving the permitted area with their alcohol.
And also to make sure nobody brings alcohol in.
Right, yes. Yeah, that's a great point. We will not be permitting, you know, outside, you know, containers into the consumption area. All of the food for Fall Fest, I know we've talked about Fall Fest a lot. We haven't necessarily talked about the specific areas, but now that the parking lot's back open, we've been able to map a lot out. The map was attached to this application for our one-day alcohol license, but all of the food for the event, for the most part, will actually be in this area as well that the alcohol will be in. So, it'll be a good mix of, you know, high-top tables, Jim's bar service, food service, in addition to some other, you know, activities for the event. So, I think that has everything covered. There was a small typo on the hours of event on the application. We'd request this board grants the hours of event from eleven A. M. to four P. M. The application noted eleven thirty to four P. M. Again, we're seeking eleven A. M. to four P. M. I guess we'll pause there. If there's any questions for Jim or I, we certainly entertain that, but thanks for having us.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen, for the explanation. Anybody want to start us off, please? Ms. Miselli?
Thank you for coming to explain this. I support this. I think you guys have, it sounds like you answered a lot of my questions already. On the three-drink limit, how are you gonna track? Are you gonna write people's names down, stamp? How are you gonna?
Pat's gonna provide me with wristbands, and we're gonna have three whole, we're gonna have punches so that-
Right in my mind. That's exactly what I was thinking.
It's very similar. You know, a lot of folks in Wilmington right now equate things to Treehouse because it's our latest offering in the area, but those that have been to Treehouse are familiar with the wristbands you get, and then there's some sort of marking or identification on the wristband after you purchase. So, we'll be following same practices.
Once we ID them and then we know they're over twenty-one, then they will get a wristband.
Okay, that's great. That was-
If anybody has clearly overconsumed Jim's, Jim's team is trained for, you know, watching out for things like that, and they'll simply be denied.
Yeah, we never know what people have been doing before they first approached the bar. So, we just assume everybody, nobody's safe from us.
No, and I think that's a good point because, you know, you had mentioned you'll keep an eye on, you know, people bringing their own, which whether you're gonna be there or not, that's always a concern at these type of things. You know what I mean? So, it's something that, you know, I feel that the police deal with regularly at these events anyway, even if we weren't serving beer and wine, so.
I'm sure they have signs, like, no coolers inside or something.
Yeah, 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 yeah. But I think you have a good plan. I like that it's gonna be contained to that area because that's what I was, you know, if people are gonna be roaming around, I wasn't too keen on that. But, um, yeah, you answered my question, so I think it's great. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miselli. Mr. West?
One question that I have is that I know we have it set up for the twenty-eighth, but Fall Fest does have a rain date, correct?
Yes, on October fifth.
So, would we want, in a motion, would we want to have a rain date of October fifth included in the motion?
That's a good suggestion.
Yeah, thank you for that, Frank, and we certainly will entertain that rain date for this one-day alcohol license should we need it. Fingers crossed we don't, but if we do.
And I assume, sir, that all, anyone bartending is trained, I'm trying to think what the-
Tip-certified.
Tip-certified, that's, yeah.
Absolutely. They all have other jobs. They work in restaurants, and they're all bartenders. And they're all, there isn't anybody in our crew that's really under the age of twenty-eight. So, we're, not to say they're not immature, but they can be. They are of age, shall we say.
And if somebody showed up at, say, three fifteen, got a beverage, and then showed up at three forty-five, got another beverage, would they be served or they be watched or?
We would have to check their wristband.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that, you know, the event's almost over at this point. They've had at least one, if not two.
Well, we could talk about what time you want to shut the bar down. It doesn't have to be, it can be three forty-five, it can be three thirty.
And, you know, we're happy to put that in the permit, that, you know, the last call, if you will, will be three forty-five. Our event permits overall for this entire event is the event ends at four P. M. So, four P. M. means folks are leaving the event. So, you know, whether you just purchased a drink or you're just about done with your drink, it means you have to be gone from the venue at four P. M., and that drink cannot leave the venue beyond four P. M.
Okay, yeah, it'd be nice if we could do like the three forty-five, only this, because this way here would be, you know, you'd have last call and you'd have an opportunity, you know, at least there'd be a good fifteen minutes that somebody's-
So, no one's chugging it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Good suggestion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Weston. Before we move on, I just want to confirm, Mr. Manager, as was mentioned, just to confirm, we do have the police recommendation?
We do, Mr. Chair. We have a recommendation from Chief Joe Desmond. I'm writing to recommend the approval of a one-day beer and wine license for the upcoming Fall Fest scheduled for September twenty-eighth, two thousand and four, so.
Thank you. Mr. DePalma?
Are you planning on any additional security around the three stations that you're gonna be at?
We will have a supervisor here, probably the owner, Nicole Otis, who will not be responsible for pouring beer, but just managing the overall site for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DePalma. Mr. Kyra?
Yeah, Mr. Bendel, thank you. You mentioned that you're an eight-year-old company. Is it a for-profit company, or do you?
It's an LLC, so yes, it's for-profit.
And are you planning to make the donation back to the?
I haven't specified with Patrick yet, but it's certainly something we entertain with all of the charity foundation work that we do.
I would assume, I don't know if that's the correct word, that we would need to have more police detail on since we're now serving alcohol in public on a public property. Will you be paying for that extra detail?
If it's required. And Patrick?
Sure.
Yeah, so in our meeting with the police, we certainly did talk about the details and staffing for the event. Once, should this permit be granted, we'll be having a follow-up meeting with the police to iron out, you know, the overall event logistics in addition to this new alcohol piece, and whatever police details are needed for the alcohol, you know, related juncture of this event will be paid by the committee slash In the Mix bartending via check to the, you know, whatever source we need to make that check to.
I don't see how alcohol is enhancing a family fun day, but I don't mean to be a prude. You know, I have a glass of beer after I mow my lawn, but anyway. Let's see. So, you mentioned that you're gonna have wristbands. Are they wristbands that you can't cut off? Because I would assume that-
Pat's gonna supply them to me, the same ones at Treehouse?
Yeah, I've been to Treehouse, as a matter of fact. Yeah, they're like, almost like a hospital band. They're hard to get off, and you wanna rip them off. But it appears scissors would cut them off, and maybe they could come back for three more.
It's, it's-
So, how do you monitor?
Yeah, it's your typical Tyvek wristband. You see it at many events. We actually purchase them from the same supplier that supplies Fenway Park with their wristbands. Can you cut it off and tape it on? Absolutely. But, you know, I certainly look to Jim's team and the police team. You know, if you clearly see that, you know, a Tyvek wristband has been cut, it's quite obvious. But that's why we have the trained staff and we have the public safety officials that we do, you know.
Well, if, I don't mean to cut you off, but if a Tyvek wristband is cut off, they're gonna throw it away and purchase a new one, so the police and unless they have-
Oh, in terms of-
Some sort of extra, you know, vision from above, they're not gonna know that this person just came in for three and is coming in for three more. Or someone's getting someone free extras.
No one can get somebody something. If one person comes up to the bar, they're gonna get one drink. If they want to buy one for their friend or their wife, they have to bring that person up to us, just like any other public concession.
You mentioned that you did hundreds of private events, but you did two for the town of Burlington and Arlington. Were they outdoor events or indoor events?
For the town of Burlington, they have an event center that they rent out, and so that's indoors. For Arlington, we did a project with the Fidelity House, and that was indoor and outdoors because it was about three hundred people. Yeah, but they had security there. It was all fenced in, and police were there.
So, it was fenced in. So, will this area be fenced in?
Yes. Yep, via fencing, the committee is providing. It'll be your typical barricade fencing, and that was a recommendation from the police.
Will it be one way in, one way out?
Yes.
Pat, or will it be one way in and then you go out the other way?
Yeah, it'll be one way in and one way out. You know, we're playing with the layout that we have, with the construction, but, you know, there's a lot of things that are going into the overall Fall Fest event in terms of how folks are coming and going. Much of it was recommendations and asks from the police in terms of safe crowd control. So, in terms of entrance and exit from this consumption area, it will be one way in and one way out, unless the police recommends something else as we iron out the final logistics.
Now, you gave each of us a map, but you didn't tell us where that consumption area is on this.
Yes, if you look at the map, there is a black area around the municipal parking lot with the red arrow going into it. The red arrow points to a white box that says one-day alcohol permit notes. Item number one says consumption area is the black boundary line in the parking lot.
I'm sorry, I don't see a red arrow. I don't see a black box. I just-
I'm happy, I printed off three of these.
Unless I'm wrong. Do you see it?
No.
Over here?
This is the, I don't know.
Okay.
Thank you. That's okay, we can share.
You can, Pat, you can share with Frank.
Where are we talking?
Okay.
Right here. Yeah.
So, that's a, that's a pretty significant area.
Where the raffle center is, I guess, in that area.
And where are the bars, where are the three bars gonna be situated?
So, again, the Wilmington Police Department will help us with the final logistics, but Jim and I and our Fall Fest coordinator in the back, Jen, we just walked the parking lot, and we feel the best spot for those bars are next to the Fourth of July parking lot.
The building.
The, yes, yes, thank you. The Fourth of July building, so we have some power for some of the needs of the overall system.
And they will all be, they'll all be together in the same area. They won't be distributed around the parking lot.
I'm sorry, did you say that it's gonna be cordoned off near the Fourth of July building?
The bar area will be, the serving area will be. The consumption area is the entire municipal parking lot within that black area, essentially the whole parking lot that's available.
Oh, so they can take their drink and then go in that entire parking lot area and drink it?
Yep.
Okay, so the entire parking lot is the consumption area?
Yes.
But the, so this dotted line, is that where you're serving? That's what I don't understand. Are you serving over near the Fourth of July building?
Correct.
You're serving near the Fourth of July building?
Exactly where your finger is, yeah.
So, this whole area then is all-
Is the consumption area, but we'll have one central serving area.
And that's near the Fourth of July building? I'm just trying to understand because I don't understand that-
The serving area is next to the Fourth of July building. The dotted line correlates to something else. That's the- So, that's basically mapped over the Fall Fest event map, but there are some special notes on there that pertain to the consumption area for this permit.
You're expecting a lot of drinkers, huh? Wow. So, liability, I don't see any liability.
As pursuant to the bylaw, there, yep.
Say that again?
It was boilerplate requirement, one and two, one million, two million?
One and two million, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, I don't have that.
No, I just emailed it to Beverly today.
Just in case anybody didn't catch that on the microphone, it was just received today, and the number was?
One million, two million.
One million per incident, two million aggregate.
And that was received by the office today. Thank you.
Have the neighbors been notified? I know that there was a yard sale this past weekend, and the neighbors were not pleased with the yard sale, although it didn't cause any problems, no noise, no, really, nothing that I could see. I walked it. I was actually part of it as a member of the Wilmington Sons and Daughters of Italy and the Wilmington Band Parents. I thought it was very, a very good event, but this is different. It's gonna, you're gonna be serving alcohol right near those neighbors, and I can imagine the complaints on that one. So, I don't know if, have you notified the neighbors?
It's not required. I am happy to send a notice. You know, whatever the outcome of this meeting is, I'm happy to oblige by any conditions.
And, so we don't know yet, Mr. Slagel, about police details, how many more you're gonna need, but it will be all taken by the vendor. He'll pay for all of that.
That's correct, yes.
And do we have a recommendation from Town Council on this?
We have not gotten a recommendation from Town Council.
And just to clarify, do we usually seek Town Council approval or thoughts for these one-day permits? I know another group just sought a one-day permit.
Well, just to clarify, we're serving alcohol on town property?
Yep, yeah, no, I'm just asking.
And I don't know that we've ever had this come before us. And, you know, again, I'm not, I'm not a prude when it comes to this. I think it's actually a pretty good idea, but I don't know that I'm ready to take the responsibility of someone feeling good and getting in their car and hopping a curve. So, that's, I would probably feel better if we looked at taking this up at the next meeting until we talk to Town Council, until we see the liability, which just came in today, until we talk to Joe Desmond at the Police Department, how many more individuals he's gonna require to be out there, until the neighbors have been notified. I think we need to do our due diligence before we move forward, but that's just my opinion. I, it seems like a, seems on the face, it's a great idea, you know, but I just have a lot of apprehension in it. No, I'm sorry, that's just the way, the way I feel.
Thank you, Mr. Kyra. Anybody want to add anything else? Questions for the, yes, Mr. West?
Just a comment is that I know the Hound and Tavern didn't, quote, "sell alcohol," but at their fiftieth anniversary event, they did have a beer vendor that was giving, you know, again, small samples. I don't remember exactly how, you know, it was like two ounces or two, three ounces, something like that, and there was a maximum of two. And they had a policeman on duty that they would give you two tickets, and you could, you know, use the tickets because there were two different types of beer that this particular vendor was having. They were not selling any additional alcohol, and I guess one question for you, Mr. Sir, is that are you gonna be, are you gonna be offering unopened alcohol for purchase, you know, like, you know, at the event? Either unopened bottles or cans or?
No, we expect to be pouring everything out of kegs into a cup.
So, you're not, you're not, you're vendor, you're not the type of vendor that markets a particular beverage?
No, I do not.
Okay.
All are welcome.
Yeah, I mean, I tend, I think Kevin might be on to a couple of things, you know, I mean, on the face, I'm comfortable with it. I mean, it's just, you know, the, I know that, you know, the Fourth of July Committee has done an awesome job for umpteen years with every event that they've ever put on, including the Fall Fest from last year. And I know that you guys aren't gonna knowingly want to risk any future on one particular vendor, you know, to have it at a particular event. So, I mean, you know, I'm fairly comfortable, to be honest with you, but like I say, I do, I do understand Selectman Kyra's, or Select Board Member Kyra's views on, A, the police, you know, police presence and, you know, just, you know, general liability. That does make sense. I mean, would there be a way to modify it to a two-drink maximum, maybe? I don't know if that would, if that would help Kevin, if that would be something that would make you feel better on? I'm just throwing it out there as an option. I don't know. Because I know you, obviously, you're trying to sell to make a profit, to make a profit, to give a donation. So, I'm just kind of thinking it might be a happy medium, possibly. I don't know. I don't know what your thoughts would be on that, gentlemen?
I have no thoughts. I mean, this is completely up to you, folks. If you want to impose a limit, whatever that limit is, we'll be obliging.
And to be candid, we came up with a three-drink policy after seeing how some other community events did these types of operations. Three seemed to have been the norm.
And Treehouse.
And a Treehouse, which is a place that a few of us hang out at quite frequently, so that's where the idea was from.
I also wanted to mention that when I saw the hours of the event, eleven thirty A. M., I said, boy, that's kind of early, but now you want to push it back to eleven A. M., so that's even a little bit earlier, so. That's, I don't know. I'm not a morning drinker, so.
If I have no issues of its location, number one, you're gonna be in front of the, or on the side of the Fourth of July building, and you're gonna be fenced off for an area so that people can't just walk. You know, there's an in and out to it. The three-drink limit, how many ounces are these drinks?
Depends on the size cup that we use. Typically, twelve, twelve-ounce beer and six-ounce wine.
I have no issues with it. I don't think it's going to be an event that people are gonna sit there and get a drink, walk outside the area, pound it down, and then go have another drink, get another one, out, pound it down. I, this is a family event that is gonna make it a little more casual. I support the process completely, and I do know that our chief will be reviewing it with you. And if he feels that there should be a number of officers at the alcohol stations, and I feel that you'll just say, fine, okay, that's the way we have to do it. I know there's concerns. I know we have, now I know we have liability insurance. I have, I have no qualms with this at all. I think it's just gonna enhance the, the event anyways. It's a fantastic event. I believe last year you had somewhere in the area of six thousand people appear for what you thought was just gonna be a little, you know, family get-together, so to speak, and it went viral. You know, I commend you, and again, I have no issues with this process at all. I like the idea of three forty-five, you know, shutting the caps off. And as far as anybody taking another ban from someone, I hate to say it like this, but there's people gonna try it, and you're gonna have, if you're, all your bartenders are professional, they're gonna be able to key on, hey, you've been here three times already. Having been to events like this, I know that they key on faces. Again, I don't feel there's going to be an issue, and the biggest thing is that the Police Department is going to, and I hate to say it like this, but dictate to you. that the Police Department is going to, and I, I hate to say it like this, but dictate to you, we're gonna have to have two additional officers there, three different, whatever the case may be, and, uh, yeah, we'll move on from there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DePalma.
Thank you.
So gentlemen, thank you, this is, I think this has been some really healthy discussion, you can imagine, thank you for your patience, because this is the first time we've been charged with making a decision like this, so I, I think there's been some really good questions. You know, I think this can be a really safe event, based on what I've heard. I'm happy to hear, and I'll just ask you one more time to repeat it, if you don't mind, every person who comes up is gonna be carded regardless of
Correct.
appearance or age, which is great, because I'm at the age now where I'm disappointed when I don't get carded, so I think that's a good thing.
You.
And I don't think, I don't, I don't think people will be disappointed taking that extra step for safety. So, we have a couple of items here, one is to, to take up the idea of extending the hours by a half hour. I think we need to take that up, 11 to, to four, with a 3:45 is what I'm hearing, seems to be the consensus for the last call. That would be one issue, then the next would be making sure we include the rain date as, uh, as it relates to this particular item, this vote, and also, did I miss anything else? So those are the things I think we need to consider here, as we prepare for, I would imagine somebody will make a motion here, so let's keep those in mind, and is there anything else you wanted to add before we call for a vote?
No, I think this was a great conversation, we certainly recognize, we, as in the Fourth of July Committee, recognize this is the first time that this board has been tasked with approving a one-day permit on town property, so we certainly understand the, you know, the, you know, the healthy discussion and the thoughts that go into such. The Fourth of July Committee has been planning large-scale community events for 45 years now, we have never planned an event without extensive logistics meetings with the town. We will continue to do this with, you know, all of our other events, this event in particular with the alcohol piece, we have a great relationship with the Police Department. You know, we'll, we'll get things ironed out, you know, we, I wanna make sure this works, we certainly understand our name is on the line, town property is on the line. If, if at any hand things seem to be getting out of order or out of hand, it just gets shut off. It's, you know, we'll, you know, we'll address things accordingly, that's why we are hiring a trained company versus individuals that are taking care of the pouring of this.
Right, and I think there was one other thing, I know there was a, a good suggestion about notifying the neighbors, are you willing to accept that as one of the?
Yeah, we, we've sent notices out in the past for certain things based on these conversations, I am happy to send out a notice to the Middlesex Ave neighbors, the Powderhouse Circle neighbors, any other neighbors the town feels necessary. We have a standard Fourth of July Committee letter that, that we send out to residents notifying them of the event, the event's hours, the event's, you know, activities, that, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll put in a copy of the schedule, you know, we can send that out tomorrow.
Great. Anything else?
Yeah, I just, I just don't see how alcohol is enhancing a family fun day and inviting, uh, parents to drink and then take your children home. It doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me, but.
Okay. Any, anybody wanna offer a motion?
I will make a motion that we accept the application with the change of hours from 11 to four. And last call will be at 3:45. And the rain date will be October 5th. And I believe that's it, oh, with the stipulation that letters are sent out to, to the butters.
I'll second that.
I think I got it.
Discussion?
Thank you, there's been a motion, uh, thank you for your second discussion.
Just somebody in the, in the audience was motioning to make a comment, I don't know if you'd want to allow that or not.
If anybody would like to make a comment as it relates to this particular issue, I don't see why not, if somebody, please, if you don't mind, just identifying yourself for the record.
Jennifer Hunt.
And address, address if you don't.
98 Woburn Street.
Thank you.
So I wanna thank you all for considering this, I'm not up there, but it was my fault that 6,000 people showed up last year. Patrick said I need some help, can you make sure we get about 750 to 1,000 people, and I go big or go home. So this is really important to me, I put a ton of time into this, so thank you for the consideration, but I wanna stress, I do events like this all the time, through my own company as well, and we will take every precaution necessary to make this happen the right way. I've lived in this town almost my whole life, my husband's been here for almost 60 years. We get it, it's important, but I also want you to know that this is something that the community brought to us, we didn't just come up with it. This was something that throughout our communications, after the event, during the event last year, we asked people what would make this better, and this was the feedback that we got overall. The other piece to that is, I'd like to think that people that are parents are responsible, and that they're not both drinking. So I know when I had a little one, my husband and I didn't go to something like this and we both drank. It was either his turn or my turn, and I think that we have to look at this community and look at the people that are in it, and assume that they are responsible and smart and trustworthy, and this is not a Tewksbury Irish festival where everybody's going at nine o'clock at night and they're drinking in their car for three hours before they go. This is a town event that starts at 11 for food, and the reason that we asked for the 11 o'clock was not because we want everyone to have extra time to drink, but simply because there are people coming in and out, and the heavy lunch rush started at 11, and we were sold out of food completely by 2 o'clock last year. So, um, we have doubled and tripled up on our food vendors to make sure there's lots of food, we've added games to that area, we've tried to do a number of things to keep people busy. So, thank you, I just wanted you to understand what we're putting into this, from a thought process as well. And that they will not be able to get to any part of the family zone, so that people that don't wanna be around that don't have to be. That will be roped off separate.
Thank you very, thank you for your comment. Any other discussion here, um, from the committee? Okay, we do have a motion and a second, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes four to one, okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to, uh, what we hope will be a very safe and fun event, and we know that we'll look forward to hearing more about the outcome of your conversations with the Police Chief after tonight.
Great.
But thank you both for being here and have a good evening.
Thank you very much, appreciate you.
Good luck with the event.
Thank you.
Please sign.
Okay, uh, that was our only appointment for this evening, so we will move next into item number five, which is communications, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, the first communication is communication from the Town Manager regarding the schedule for December 7th, 2024 Special Town Meeting. As the Board is aware, the annual town meeting in May, uh, the MBTA Communities zoning amendment was referred back to the Planning Board with the anticipation that in the fall, we would have a special town meeting to go forward and pass it. I had a meeting internally with the Town Moderator, the Town Clerk, and several other staff members to try and determine the, the most optimal day to, to have a Fall Town Meeting, and December 7th came forward as the day that made the most sense. So, uh, I would, uh, this is, this memorandum, and then a, a later board to consider would be in reference to, to scheduling that town meeting.
Thank you, discussion, Mr. Kyra.
Mr. Chair, yeah, I, I, when I read the letter, I saw that the MBTA zoning was specific in nature, and then down below in the second paragraph, in addition, the town has two other fiscal matters, what, what might those be?
Uh, one of them is a bad bill, uh, as the Board knows, bills from prior fiscal years can't get paid without approval of town meetings, so there's a bad bill that's in the Clerk's office, it's in the range of about $4,000 from a prior fiscal year that needs to get voted on. The second is the eminent domain matter that the Board has been discussing with respect to, um, the Wildwood Street properties.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. West?
Yeah, I was just wondering, as we get closer, I think that we should have an agenda right, and maybe bring Valerie in at one or two meetings before this, basically to go over any updates, and, or, and to field any other questions that we as a Board, or certainly if it's a public hearing, the, the audience could have, just to, you know, give it, a, give it a go-around at this meeting, as opposed to spending hours at, uh, which we probably will, at, at the Special Town Meeting.
I think it's a good suggestion, there was a lot of discussion, a lot of debate, uh, leading up to this, and then we've seen to, not to say it's fallen off anybody's radar, but we certainly haven't talked about it here, so I think that's a good suggestion, and we'll, we'll make note of it. With, Mr. DePalma.
I would strongly recommend that we have her in prior to Thanksgiving recess. This way, she's here, uh, first meeting in November, I will be, believe it will be the strongest. People aren't getting ready for the Thanksgiving holiday and everything else, and I think we can get a strong participation on it.
I think that's also a good suggestion, correct me if I'm wrong, Babe, but we, we usually traditionally meet once in December. And so, I think it's important that we do meet, you know, in the month of November to discuss this, so, thank you. And if there's no objection, then maybe we could, perhaps since we're discussing it, we should move, we should take up item number six, which is a Board to consider to call a Special Town Meeting for Saturday, December 7th, 2024, at 9 a.m. at Wilmington High School, Joanne M. Benton Auditorium at 159 Church Street. Without objection, would someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded and discussed?
No, uh, actually, yeah, just only one question that I had was, I know one of the things that some towns were looking for, I think they, there was some sort of a lawsuit being held, is there any, have there been any progress with that, one way or another?
So that's actually a really good question, one of the reasons why we were contemplating trying to try a date in November, but we ended up doing the date in December, is obviously, the longer we wait in the year, the more chance that there is that there's gonna be some sort of resolution. I, I don't anticipate there being a resolution by this time, um, the arguments, I believe, in the Milton case will be happening prior to this, but as anyone who's been in the court knows, it sometimes takes a long time to get decisions out, so I, I anticipate there's not gonna be a decision, but this date gives us the best chance
Right.
of trying to get some, a, a chance of a decision coming down before it happens, rather than a November date, which is the other one.
And again, I'm glad, I'm glad that we're having at this date personally, because it's far enough away from Christmas, but close enough to, like you said, that any, any resolution could happen from this, because we just wanna make sure that everyone, you know, the people know the latest news, shall we say, so, that's all.
Just to preclude any other questions, I did, wanted to let everyone know, I did check with Lou Smagli and the Veterans to make sure that there wasn't a Pearl Harbor Day, um, event scheduled, there is not, so, um, we don't have to worry about that. We also did discuss the possibility of doing an event like this on a weeknight, but out of concerns for seniors who may not feel comfortable thriving in the evening, at that point in time, anytime after work is gonna be dark, so we decided that a Saturday morning would probably still make the most sense, from the internal staff who talked about it, obviously, it's up to the Board, but those were our thoughts.
I think that's consistent with what we do for our traditional town meetings, so people will, can anticipate that. Any other questions, we do have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor? That is unanimous, thank you very much, so mark your calendars, and more news to come, December 7th, 2024, we will have a Special Town Meeting at 9 a.m. at the high school. Okay, let's circle back to our second memorandum, please.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, we have a memorandum from Jamie McGoldy, uh, Public Works Director regarding the stop sign request for Carolyn Road at Marsha Road. The, uh, the, the response provides the information that, um, uh, Jamie had put together with respect to this, uh, stop sign request, more, but I think this was specifically draw your attention to the MUTCD, kind of regulations regarding stop signs, and, uh, his, uh, response to, uh, to this request, which was to, to, uh, to recommend that we do not put a stop sign at this intersection.
Mr. Chair, I just wanna add, there was also, um, the Police Department also did a study in that area, and concurred with Jamie's decision. Even though I know there was a statute in there that, you know, but just to let you know that the Police did do a study in that area.
Thank you.
Mr. Mr. Chair, I was just curious, if they're recommending that we don't meet, they don't meet the minimum conditions, my, my question is, is that, is there anything that we, the town, can do to somehow, you know, aside from, you know, putting a police officer there 24/7, that's obviously not the thing, but is there a way to put any type of sign, is just a, I don't know if it's a yield sign, or a, you know, caution sign, or just something to make people aware that they should be stopping, or at least mapping out the area as they're approaching it?
Mr. Chair, uh, through. In the conclusion, it reads, uh, that, uh, they'll be installing stop bars to help with this intersection, so
Yeah.
it's, it's in here for.
Thank you for that, yeah, and also, I think you may recall, a few years ago, the town purchased a number of digital signs that
Right.
can be moved around, and they have, if you're driving around town, you'll see them, um, you know, they'll spend a few weeks at one location, and then they'll move on to another location, and I would imagine that we could probably, hopefully, get that on the list for that, that, that area, and
And we can certainly do that.
It's been effective, I think it's nice
It has, I agree.
when all of a sudden you're used to traveling on a particular route, and then all of a sudden, there's a sign, digital sign flashing at you, they've gotten my attention in the past, and you tend to slow down, or if you're speeding, um, and then, uh, then it pops up in another area in town, so.
You don't speed.
I'm a notoriously slow driver, but don't get stuck behind me, but.
Maybe when this, when these are installed, maybe if we can get a memo from Jamie, just to say that they've been installed, or?
I, I can ask him to put a, to, to let the Board know when they're installed, maybe it wouldn't be a memo, I could, just, but I'll let the Board know, absolutely.
Okay, yeah, that's, you know, something simple.
Thank you, Mr. DePalma.
I'd like to see if we could have Jamie review our stop signs in town. I know there's been some stop signs put up, uh, by the town that are not approved. And I know of one incident where there was a minor accident, and the person that was hit claimed that the gentleman went through a stop sign, and come to find out the stop sign was not properly authorized.
I, I could, oh, I apologize.
Yeah, no, no, just to be clear, so I mean, we obviously have a lot of stop signs.
But he must have.
Is there a particular one you want them to look at, or?
Taff Road.
Okay, yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to be mindful of.
No, he, I would assume that he has a listing of all of them anyways
Yeah.
in his database, uh, but, uh, that's a concern I have, where, uh, if there is an accident and people look into it deep enough, they'll find that there is not a legal, uh, stop sign.
We'll make a note that, uh, perhaps they can look at the one located at Taff Road?
I have that, absolutely.
Oh, sure, Assistant Town Manager O'Connell, if you don't mind, just coming to the mic. Thank you.
I apologize for the information, but I just wanted to bring some clarity that the stop bars have already been painted.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connell. All right, we saved you one email. All right, any other, uh, discussion here, as it relates to this memo? Thank you, we'll move on to the next one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, the next memorandum is from Valerie Gingrich, our Director of Planning and Conservation, regarding the recently passed, um, legislation at the state, the Affordable Homes Act, and more particularly the provisions in that act that created a statewide definition for accessory dwelling units, and, um, uh, changed, uh, Chapter 40A to allow a certain, certain types of accessory dwelling units as a matter of right.
And so, yeah, thank you for that, and when we discussed this the other day when setting the agenda, first thing I asked you was, do we need to take any action, is there any town meeting action that needs to happen, changing the bylaws, and and I think the recommendation was no, that town, this would supersede any town meeting, um, bylaws that we have, so there's really no action. This is just more informal for everybody to make sure that you saw that this happened at the state level, and that residents were aware of it. And we have one final memo?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, the, the last memoir is from the manager to the Wilmington Select Board, and in response to a question that came up at our last regular meeting regarding the change in the white goods stickers, and more particularly, what was going to happen with the, uh, the, uh, the payment that we were receiving in the town for those, uh, those white goods, the $10 that we were receiving. And so, as mentioned in the memorandum, uh, we would be using that $10 to offset the subsidization
that the town provides for these white goods. I think we've talked about it since the beginning of this, that the white goods cost the town more to deal with than the $10 or even the $25 that we're now getting, and so we'll use that $10 to try and cut our bill with Casella to handle those white goods.
Just as a reminder, it's the 13th of October is the last day?
Columbus Day, I think, is.
Columbus Day weekend?
Columbus Day weekend.
So the 11th is the last day. You can purchase a ticket from the town, and then the holiday weekend starts anew. Thank you. And we've been putting out notices about this?
Yes, Jamie's been pushing it out on social media and on the website, and making sure that he's providing as much notice to the folks in town as possible that this is coming.
So can I buy, like, 10 tickets?
Like the forever stamps, right?
Okay, thank you. All right, board to considers, we took up number six. It was unanimous vote to have a special town meeting December 7th. Item number seven is a board to consider. Mr. Manager.
Item number seven, board to consider formally opening the warrant for the special town meeting for December 7th, 2024, and consider a closing date for said warrant.
Would anybody like to offer a motion?
I'll offer a motion to open the warrant for the special town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. West. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. De Palma. Is there discussion? Do we know a particular closing date we want to include in this?
I think we'd be looking for the next meeting.
Okay.
Closing date for, for September 23rd.
September 23rd would be the closing date for the warrant. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, it is unanimous. Thank you. Number eight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Number eight is a board to consider appointing Stephanie L. Frontera as Finance Director and Town Accountant for the town of Wilmington.
Great. You may recall that just in the last week of August, just before Labor Day, we did call a special meeting to interview here in public and live on camera an applicant for our Finance Director of Town Accountant, which has been vacant for some time after Mr. Perry's departure, and so we had an interview here, and now tonight, we're being asked to take up her appointment. So would anybody like to offer a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept her appointment stipulated on negotiation.
Subject to notification, yep. Okay, is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Seconded by Mrs. Casella. Discussion.
I just want to confirm that Mr. Kyra did get a chance to speak to Ms. Frontera, because he was absent, and he's.
Yeah, I, I have not had that opportunity to speak. I know Mr. Slagle gave me the contact on Tuesday. I didn't have an opportunity to call Wednesday or Thursday, and she's on vacation on Friday, so I was not at the interview process. I did receive it, the WCTV interview from the Assistant Town Manager Judy O'Connell. Thank you for that, and thank you, Mr. Slagle, for the number, but I'm going to abstain, because I did not have a chance to talk to her. I did see the interview. You guys all did a great job. She seems like a very qualified candidate. I have her resume. I just didn't have the opportunity to have a conversation with her, so I'm going to abstain, but most likely, if I did have an opportunity to talk to her, I'd probably be on the, the positive side.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that you were comfortable with the, okay.
Okay, I'm just going to pause for a second. Ms. O'Connell, we, technical, okay.
Do I have to say that over again?
Sure. Why don't we, okay, would a quick recess help you, or, I want to make sure that we're on TV? Yeah, thank you for the heads up. I could see something was up.
Something when Patrick tripped over that?
Can I just confirm, are we still being recorded, I hope?
Yeah, we're definitely still being recorded.
We are being recorded, okay, so it's a, it's a live feed issue. Why don't we do this? Why don't we, why don't we take, why don't we take a five-minute recess, see if we can get some more news, and give them an opportunity to come back on live, and we'll be back. Is there?
I would like to make a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Second.
Short recess?
Short recess.
Short recess.
Thank you, yeah. Seconded. Discussion. All those in favor for a short recess? Okay, we'll be in recess here at 7:58 for a few minutes, and we'll be back. Thank you. For the millions of viewers at home, welcome back. We, we welcome you, and so, thank you to our staff from WCTV. We had some technical difficulties, and you were able to navigate that terrific, so thank you for getting us back online so quick. Okay, so I believe we were in the middle of item number eight. Beverly, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have a motion from Mr. De Palma, which is to appoint Mrs. Frontera with subject to negotiations. I believe there was a second. We were having discussion before we dropped off, okay, so here we are. Is there further discussion on the appointment? Mr. Manager.
If I could just bring up, at the, at the last meeting, there was a suggestion that we reach out to references, and so I did do that last week, and got multiple glowing references regarding Ms. Frontera, including a couple that I just wanted to highlight for the board. One was from Tony Roselli, who is the, Rosellian Clark, who's our auditing firm. He had nothing but good things to say about Stephanie as a candidate, and believes she would be really excellent in the role, and has worked with her professionally in the past. The other was kind of equally important to me, which was the, the retired IT Director from Ipswich, who worked heavily with Ms. Frontera on Munis, and said that she was, he, he really considered her a Munis expert, and they worked in tandem on the implementation of Munis in Ipswich, and I just thought those two things. All the, all the, the references were, were exceptional, but I thought those two were really critical for the board to be aware of.
Thank you. Yeah, and I think she had, she was a wonderful candidate. I thought she did a very nice job, and, and I thought she had the trifecta, and by that I mean she had private work experience, she had public work experience in both the town side and the school side, which I think would all, be all to our benefit, so I thought she was an excellent candidate. Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
No, and again, I'm just going to abstain, no reflection on her. I was not at the interview meeting. I did see the interview on cable. I was not able to contact her before she went on vacation, so I have her resume. She seems very qualified in the references, so just want to make that mention.
Was it 60 days that she asked you to notice that?
I believe so.
She mentioned that? I think everything would be subject to negotiations.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion on the potential appointment? Okay, hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Mr. De Palma's motion to appoint Stephanie L. Frontier as our new Finance Director, Town Accountant, subject to negotiations, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? None, and one is going to abstain. So the motion passes 4-0-1. And so we will notify her. The good news.
We'll do so.
All right, we look forward to having her. So I think it's a wonderful candidate, I think residents will be very, very happy with the appointment. So congratulations to her. Okay, item number nine. Board to consider, the appointment of Joseph Moselli as a member of the Economic Development Committee.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make that motion to appoint Joe Moselli as my selection to the Economic Development Committee. Joe is just an outstanding candidate, a graduate with a bachelor's and master's in finance from Bentley College, a longtime resident, a volunteer of the town, graduate of Wilmington High School, and just so on and so forth, and I believe everybody has his resume here. Could not have selected, in my eyes, a better person than Joe to serve in this position on the Economic Development Committee.
Great, thank you. His motion, is there a second? I'll second it for discussion. Is there anyone who want to offer discussion?
Yeah, just if I may, Mr. Manager, Mr. Chairman, I was just curious. I know that the Finance Committee had him for our part in appointment and he didn't get seconded. I was just curious what, if there was any rationale behind that or not, or?
Thank you. So as I mentioned, going back three, two, three meetings ago, that I, as one of the members of the Appointing Committee, voted to appoint Mr. Moselli. It did not get a second, so it failed for lack of a second. I can't tell you what other members were thinking, but that's the way the Robert's Rules work, so.
Okay. And the other thing, I noticed that there was, there was another candidate for this position also, and I know it's your pick, Kevin, and I'm okay with that, but I was just curious if you had a rationale to go one pick over the other, or?
I think that he's the most qualified person, in my view, for this position, Mr. West.
Okay. Yeah, I think that brings up a good, I just want to make this, so going back some years now, we've made appointments in the past, and I think in an effort to be more transparent, we voted on as a group. I think in the past, a particular member has just announced who their appointment was, but in a spirit of just trying to be more transparent and public about it, folks, we've been, we've recent, more recently taken votes on people, so I think it's been done, it's been done both ways. I think this is a, maybe a more proper way, transparent, so this is why we're doing it, but this is just nomination. We have a second. Any other discussion?
And surely, this is not to disparage the other gentleman who put down the list of items that he wanted, or that individual wanted. I mean, there are other choices that that person wanted. I think one was Commission on Disabilities, which we were looking for solid individuals there as well, so maybe something that the town manager may want to explore, since there is openings in that, that committee.
Absolutely.
Sure, Mr. Manager?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up one thing for the Select Board. When Mr. Moselli originally submitted his statement of interest in volunteering for a board or committee in town, I did reach out to him and suggest that he proactively reach out to the State Ethics Commission, just to make sure that there wasn't any ethical questions regarding his service. He did so and provided me with the comments. The State Ethics Commission does not have any concerns about his, his service, either on the Finance Committee or on the Economic Development Committee, but I did want to just let the board know that.
Yeah, I think it's important to remind everybody that it's an ad hoc committee formed by this particular group, I believe in about 2019, don't quote me on that, but it was around that time that the town decided to create an Economic Development Committee made up of all volunteers, nobody's paid on this group, but it's all volunteers, so I just want to make sure, pointed that out as well. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. West?
Just a comment, is that, you know, being on, being the selectman designated to the, to that committee, again, I only, I think I attended three meetings or something like that, and they, for lack of a cheer, they haven't had any, any follow-on meetings, but I have, I have no problems with Joe being on the committee. I know that, you know, he's the son of entrepreneurs that, you know, have, have a local small business, so they have, you know, he's kind of grown up with that, plus he's got some education in back of him, so, again, I intend to vote for him, but I just, I was just curious about a couple of other things, that's all.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the appointment of Mr. Moselli, signified by, okay, so three, all those opposed?
Abstaining.
Okay, so two, so, so, okay, so the motion passes, three, zero, and two abstentions. Okay, so thank you to Mr. Moselli, congratulations, we'll notify him, we appreciate his volunteerism. Number 10.
Picking up already? Didn't we vote on that?
The Horables Parade?
Oh, excuse me, no, I apologize.
We have not. Number 10.
Yeah, number 10, the Board to Consider, the request of Brett Salin, the Recreation Director, to conduct its 56th Annual Horables Parade on Sunday, October 27th, 2024, at 4:30 PM. Volunteers should be at the high school around 4:15.
Always a good one. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. West, discussion, hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? It is unanimous, looking forward to another great event for the kids on October 27th.
And there's no rain date on that, correct? That's a one and done?
No rain, we're crossing our fingers for the kids, right?
Halloween will come and go.
Item number 11 is a request to light the common, Town Common pink during the month of October for Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, any discussion? Other than many thanks to those who are going to donate to make this happen for us. This is an annual request that we get, and it's with great pride that we unanimously supported this in the past. All those in favor? It is unanimous again. Thank you so much for that. Number 12 is a Board to Consider Approval of a License to Sell Christmas Trees. That's right, Christmas trees by the Wilmington Methodist Church. It was nice outside today. I'm hanging on to summer as long as I can, but this is important also. License to Sell Christmas Trees for the Wilmington Methodist Church.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I appreciate it, and the Boy Scouts, I don't want to slight them. This is a joint venture from them to sell trees, this is an annual request, as you all know, to sell. Thank you, Mr. Carr, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. West, thank you. Is discussion, Mr. Manager?
We should include the motion to waive the fee as well.
Mr. Carr, willing, so willing, the seconded is still supported? Thank you, okay, thank you for that. Any discussion? Christmas trees coming up, all those in favor? And we have four, any opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, so the motion passes 4-0 to 1, and thank you for that. It's always wonderful. They do a great job, by the way. They bag them up nice, they put them in your vehicle, they do a really good job. Kids do a great job, and thank you.
And I'm not asking for us to know that they had done that.
It's kind of nice when it's snowing. Not yet. Last Board to Consider, we have a request from Carly Langone, Friends of the Field Hockey Boosters, to use the municipal parking lot and Middlesex Ave for a fundraiser for car wash on Sunday, August 24th. You ready for this one? We're way past Christmas now. August 24th, 2025, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded, any discussion?
How, I don't have a problem with, how far is too far?
I know.
Have we ever did, I thought we had this discussion a few years back, about going way up, but that's, I'm just throwing that out there, so.
The early bird gets the worm. Not since my wife set the wedding date have I gone out this far. Just to be clear, I didn't pick it, but I support it. Any other discussion? All right, car wash, mark your calendars, August 24th, 2025, all those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you very much. We'll notify them. Okay, that concludes Board to Consider items, it brings us to public comment. I believe it is. Yep. And if you could just, folks, if you don't just mind identifying yourself, name and address for the record, that'd be great.
Yeah, good evening, my name is Jeff Cohen, I live in Wilmington at 18 Cobalt Street.
Thank you.
I'm a volunteer with United Sovereign Americans, not a spokesperson. United Sovereign Americans is a nationwide organization with thousands of active volunteers in over 20 states. Our highly qualified and credentialed data team has completed an audit of the November 8, 2022 election, using only official data provided by the state's voter registration system by city and town clerks, and it shows that the 202022 election may not have been accurate or legally compliant. We are not saying that one candidate won over another, or that any election should be overturned. The state's official data from a certified election shows that the votes, as counted, were not all valid and accurate under the law. Tonight, we will present you a resolution demanding an end to the inaccuracy and uncertainty plaguing our elections, along with a summary of our findings and the laws that apply. We are happy to meet with you and go over this information, including more detail about specific findings. If you have any questions that I cannot answer now, I will commit to getting you an answer in writing from the United Sovereign Americans Executive Team as soon as possible. This data and our request for an investigation has been shared with state election officials, and it will soon be shared with federal law enforcement. It's essential that you, as our representatives, make it clear that these issues must be taken seriously. Today, we come to you, our closest elected representatives, for support and action, or asking that you listen to the resolution, ask questions if you have them, and then vote promptly for its passage. Your action on this resolution will illustrate your dedication and support to the concerns of your constituents in your country. I will now begin the resolution, the next two speakers will continue it, and the final speaker will conclude our presentation. This is a resolution for a legally valid 2024 general election. Whereas, it is a recognized civil right in the United States for every citizen to have free and fair elections, quote, "And the right of suffrage can be denied by a debasement or dilution of the weight of a citizen's vote, just as effectively as by wholly prohibiting the free exercise of the franchise," end quote, Reynolds versus Sims, U.S. Supreme Court, 1964. Whereas, it is the duty of our election officials to guarantee our elections are accurate and free from distortion or manipulation, quote, "Congress seeks to guard the election of members of Congress against any possible unfairness by compelling everyone concerned in holding the election to a strict and scrupulous observance of every duty devolved upon him while so engaged. The evil intent consists in disobedience to the law," end quote, In Ray Coy, U.S. Supreme Court, 1888. Whereas, our constitutional system of representative government only works when the following four tenets of an election are upheld. One, the voter rolls must be accurate, National Voter Registration Act, 1993. Two, votes counted must be from eligible voters, U.S. Constitution, 14th Amendment, Section 2. Three, the number of votes counted must equal the number of voters who voted. Four, there can be no more than one in 125,000 ballots in error by the voting system, Help America Vote Act, 2002. Whereas, an open source audit of the Massachusetts 2022 general election, conducted by Massachusetts state citizens, has uncovered evidence of massive inaccuracies that violate both federal and state laws, including 751,317 ineligible or uncertain registration violations found within the Massachusetts voter roll database, 265,046 votes cast by ineligible or uncertain registrants, 87,231 more votes counted than voters who voted in the 2022 general election. No one knows who cast them. 265,027 apparent voting violations in excess of the legal standard of system accuracy for a valid federal election. The maximum allowable system errors for the 2022 general election in Massachusetts was 19. Certification as defined by law and attestation of accuracy and compliance appears to have been fraudulent and illegal. Thank you.
My name is Jeff Bean, and I live in Methuen. I'm also a volunteer with United Sovereign Americans and not a spokesperson. Whereas, these findings trample legal accuracy requirements of the voting system during a federal election. Accuracy is defined as the ability of the system to capture and report the specific selections and absence of selections made by a voter without error. Whereas, the intent of the voters must be known factually before certification can be lawfully conducted. Certification of an election that varies from the law is an abridgement of the civil rights of the citizens, a fraud ab initio, United States versus Throck Morton, 19, U.S. Supreme Court, 1978, quote, "From time immemorial, an election to public office has been, in point of substance, no more and no less than the expression by qualified electors of their choice of candidates," end quote, United States, U.S. Supreme Court, 19, United States versus classic, U.S. Supreme Court, 1941. Whereas, Massachusetts 2022 general election appears to have been invalid, depriving us of our guaranteed protection of our natural rights under a government duly and provably chosen by us, the American people, resulting in incalculable damage to our families, our way of life, and the fabric of these United States. Therefore, we call upon our representatives to provide relief to the people and the assurance of domestic tranquility by joining us in demanding a valid 2024 general election that upholds these existing laws and equitable principles of law. Number one, proof of citizenship, identity and eligibility to register and vote, not anonymous attestation. Number two, voter rolls certified accurate and available for public review and challenge 30 days before the start of early voting. Voters added after that date must bring proof of citizenship, identity and address and person to a qualified official at each polling place.
Hello, my name is Anne Marie Steele, and I live in Reading. I'm also a volunteer with United Sovereign Americans and not a spokesperson. Continuing, number three, hand-marked secure ballots similar to currency, where imaging technology is used for tabulation, the security features must be verifiable in the ballot image. Four, systems, machines, security measures, infrastructure and conduct are required to be compliant with federal law for fraud prevention regarding risk assessment, certification, testing and implementation. Five, adjudication must be signed off by party, candidate and trained citizen witnesses after being given full and effective observation rights. Candidates and trained citizens must be allowed immediate access to ballots, ballot images and cast vote records. Six, ballots regardless of entry source, election operations and systems must maintain end-to-end chain of custody from voter to vote count to final canvas, including auditability and witness transfer with paper records. Seven, a NIST compliant, randomized, statistically valid, end-to-end audit with a 95% confidence level of all elections pursuant to the 14th Amendment, Section 2, must be performed. These audits are to be conducted by qualified, insured and bonded security, forensics or financial auditors, not personnel from within the election system. Reconciliation will include the vote count, real physical ballots, adjudication, cast vote records, ballot count, qualified voter count, custody transfer and all other paper and electronic election systems, including logs. Eight, if the total of all unique variances above is more than 10% of the margin of victory, a new election must be held in the state for those candidates affected unless the issues can be provably corrected by a manual hand recount and a full review of records. Nine, waiver of requirements is not allowed, only end-to-end system compliance from registration through certification can guarantee the intent of the people is accurately recorded.
Hi, my name is Ken Steele. I too live in Reading, Massachusetts, 149 County Road. I'm also, I'm a volunteer with United Sovereign, not an official spokesperson. You just heard a powerfully written resolution outlining massive inaccuracies of our 2022 election, from registration through certification. In it, you heard us ask for meaningful remedies that will proactively protect the validity of the 2024 general election for all Americans. In fact, the resolution- In fact, the resolution cited many U.S. Supreme Court precedents that support the need for such actions. Laws are being ignored. Bottom line, the checkbook is not balancing, and we need certainty. The voting system which controls our most vitally important right, the right to choose our representatives, is not producing an accurate, trustworthy result. Do you think that these anomalies with our election system, a system which is part of our national security infrastructure, should continue to be ignored? How much is it costing us not to fix the problem? How much is it costing our GDP? Our military? Our foreign policy, our health? The self-esteem of our children and young people? And how much is it costing our dignity to keep fighting one another? The cost is immeasurable, so I urge you to show your agreement by passing the resolution. Our website showcasing our initiatives nationwide has shown some extremely informative videos that explain the anomalies and apparent violations of law that are found here in Massachusetts and as well as in other states. The website is UniteForFreedom.com. That's Unite, the number four, Freedom, dot com. I encourage you to check it out and learn more about our organization. Once more, it's Unite For Freedom, Unite the number four, ForFreedom, dot com. What you heard tonight is the culmination of thousands of hours of work by our highly qualified and credentialed volunteer data teams from Massachusetts and across the country. Let's step, let's step back for a second and look at the big picture. Large numbers of Americans, including many right here in Massachusetts, have questions about the trustworthiness of our elections. I think we can all agree that we wish this was not the case, but official data shows that these concerns are valid, and the law says resolving them is essential to securing our liberty. At the same time, government representatives at all levels of government are not being transparent or responsive to what our citizen audits have found. Our right to choose our representatives is legally valid. In illegally valid and transparent elections is the foundation upon which our constitutional republic was established. That right has been bravely protected over the past two and a half centuries by the sacrifices of our brothers, fathers, mothers, sisters, and for some of us, our sons and daughters. You on this board tonight have a chance to show everyone who defended American liberty and the citizens that you represent that you value it by passing the resolution demanding a valid general election in 2024. Appreciate your time and attention, thank you.
Thank you. Sure. Be careful of the wires. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, everyone, my name is Pat McKenney, I'm at 11 West Street here in Wilmington. Been a Wilmington resident for the last 25 years. I've also been an election official in the town for the last three years. So I guess I resonate with, especially hearing that hard data that was presented by the group that we just heard. I'm not a member of that group, I'm not a volunteer at all. But as somebody who cares about that our elections, that the people, you know, we the people are being properly represented, I just wanted to be supportive of what was just read. And also, as an election official, just from the comments that are unsolicited, that are given by the voters, I think there is a very strong feelings about this, strong concerns that are expressed just when people are coming to check in to vote. And so, on that basis too, I'd ask you to strongly consider what's here. And I guess the third point would be, my understanding is, you know, in this state, we do not, we work on a town-by-town basis in terms of bringing our election results. We're not limited to a county and having to rally multiple towns together to agree on something that we, as a town of Wilmington, can make agreements on how we want to manage our voter rolls. And, you know, taking, taking actions to represent things like citizenship, validating that, et cetera. So I would, I would encourage you to think that you do have, you know, as a town representatives, the power to help make this town, you know, in better alignment with what we should, we should, how we should be operating. So, just want to make that comment, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard? Sir, good evening.
Good evening. Before I speak,
Name and record for the, name and address.
I think you know who I am, Kevin McDonald. Before I speak with the board, I'd like to discuss what was just said and maybe let people know if you would be willing to have an agenda item to take up this resolution.
Yeah, thank you for that question, as you know, the law will prohibit us from taking a vote on this this evening because it wasn't posted properly for us to take this under public comment, so I just want to be very clear that there will not be a vote that would be out of order for us to take a vote on something that we didn't properly post on the agenda.
Hundred percent correct on that, that wasn't my question, my question was, since you're the chairman, would you be willing to put that on a selectman meeting agenda to take up that resolution?
I most certainly take it under advisement, I've got the documentation, I'll look it over.
Okay. So I have a few questions, and I had a couple of comments tonight. So the town manager mentioned that our town's auditing firm is named Roselli &amp; Clark. So my question is, how long has Roselli &amp; Clark been our auditing firm?
So I'm not exactly sure when the contract was signed, no, I've seen the contract, but I didn't, I'm not exactly sure whether it was an amendment or not.
Okay, I know that you knew Mr. Slagel, but Mr. Bendel's been on the board for a long time. Mr. Bendel, since you take great pride in signing the warrants, to the best of your recollection, since you've been on this board, how many years can you recall roughly that Roselli &amp; Clark has been our auditing firm? And has it been pretty much consistent for, say, let's just say for the last three or four years, would you say they've been the auditing firm?
I honestly don't recall the length of the term of some of the contractors that we've had.
But you review the warrants for expenditures when we pay, when the town pays money to an auditing firm, you would see that on the warrants and review that, right?
That is correct, this board does do that, and I just, again, I don't know off the top of my head, you're spotting me with that question, and I don't know the answer to it.
No problem. And regarding emails, do you folks email each other, like, in between meetings or anything like that?
The law prohibits that.
You, you never interact with each other with emails?
No, we have a great staff who coordinates everything from meetings to agendas to notices that have to go out, so as long as I've been here, communication has come through the office, so that way we're abiding by the law.
Okay, so, in other words, if Mr. West or Mr. Kyra or any selectman wanted an agenda item, what is the procedure to get that message to you, since you set the agenda?
Yeah, an individual can reach out to one other member, such as the chair, that's been the process in the past, we had, we get requests all the time from members, and sometimes it comes through the office, and the manager notifies the chair, other times, having done it in both places, been the chair and been the one requesting of the chair, as long as you're notifying one person and not as a group, a majority of the board is three, you're within the rules of the law.
Okay, thank you for that. Many months ago, and many times I've requested this, that the, the board have an agenda item to take up the town's pension situation, the costs, where it's going, who's managing it? And you've, on a number of times, stated that you would take that under advisement. And so, my question to you is, who have you reached out to advise you on that? And will you bring forth an agenda item so that the town can get a better understanding of where our pension money's going? Who's managing it? Profits, losses, risks? Is it staying in our country, is it staying in our state, is it staying in our town? That sort of thing. Who have you reached out for advisement on that?
Well, like I mentioned to you in the past, yes, I have taken it under advisement, your request. And, you know, the responsibility of the chair, which I take very seriously, and so have my colleagues in the past, when they've served as chair. The goal here, every meeting, is to try to put what's most important for the residents, given, given whatever the topic of the day is, what's coming up, you can see this evening, based on what you saw here, that we took up a number of important items, and that's what we do, so we certainly can't take up everything in one meeting, but I have taken your request under advisement.
Maybe you could help me understand something. Can you help me understand what taking something under advisement means?
It means that I will consider it.
Mr. Chair, if you wouldn't mind, I don't mean to.
Please, Mr. Kyra.
The, the town of Wilmington is under the Middlesex County Retirement System.
Right.
Its investments are through PRIM, which is the Pension Reserve Investment Management. So you, they meet once a month. So you're more than welcome to go to the, to the Middlesex County Retirement Board meeting. And you can ask questions and talk about the investments and, you know, and it's an open meeting. So that's where contributions are made from the employees of the town of Wilmington. They go to the Middlesex County Retirement Board.
Thank you for that, I did, I did know that.
I, I thought you would have.
Thank you for that.
The, the one thing that, the one reason why I'm motivated to ask this is because I keep seeing buildings, commercial buildings and industrial buildings go up. There's a building that was the former Textron property that went up, it's a very, very large warehouse. It's vacant, it got sold for $90 million. There's another building going across from Shea Concrete, there's another building up in Upton Drive, there's another building on, right off of Ballard Vale Street, I think it's Research Drive. All of these buildings are vacant. For example, the $90 million sale, I would assume that that's new growth. And the concern is, when you see buildings going up and they're getting sold for $90 million, it just seems to me that somebody that would buy a building for $90 million would have a tenant. But then I see a sign for lease. So, when all of these buildings are getting built that are vacant, and it's classified as new growth, and it's causing our tax levy to be increased because that new growth has an impact on the tax levy, I'm very suspicious of where the money's going, who's investing it, and is our pension money going toward that? Is our pension money going overseas? Is it going, say, hypothetically, would it go to, say, Venezuela on some type of foreign investment where maybe they're investing in an oil field, but then we have an embargo or some type of boycott on dealing with Venezuela? So, I think that it would be prudent for you to actually get the Middlesex County Retirement Board in here and do a presentation and find out what our assessment is, because we keep having the, more money put into that so that supposedly we can pay down our responsibility. But nobody seems to really understand that that well.
Thank you for that suggestion.
For you to not do that and to say that taking something under advisement is for you to consider it, I interpret advice as getting advice from an outside source that knows what the heck they're doing, rather than considering something. If I'm going to tell somebody I'm going to take it under advisement, I'm going to actually look for somebody to give me advice on that. This seems like a typical rubber stamp, blow people, blow the town off with your response, Mr. Bendel, and I just don't respect that. The other question I have is, when the assistant town manager became town manager, contaminated material from the water treatment facilities, which in the past was going to licensed landfills, started going to a private farm in Holden. And so my question is, is the contaminated material from the water treatment facilities still going to that private property? And if so, why is it not going to a licensed landfill? And what is the extent of our liability with that? Can you answer that, Mr. Bendel?
Mr. McDonald, I would just kindly remind you that this is public comment where people can voice their opinions on particular things, this is not a Q and A. I don't have all the information of every question that you've come up with here in front of me this evening. What I have in front of me and prepared for is what was on the agenda.
Okay.
But certainly, you know, I can appreciate your feedback, and I look forward, perhaps if there's anyone else that would like to be heard, the feedback this evening, but, you know, to spot me with a particular question, a bit unfair, could maybe we agree on that?
No, I'm not going to agree with that, and I'm going to tell you why I don't agree with it.
I'm sure you will.
Because you take great pride in signing the warrants, and supposedly you go through all the warrant expenditures so that you approve those expenditures when you sign that warrant.
That is correct, actually, if I could corrupt you, sir.
If you go through all of that, I'm not finished, if you go through all of that, I would think one of the expenditures is for trucking to go to Holden, possibly paying the farm, okay? And then, what's going on with that?
Can I interject?
You can answer the question.
I just wanted to make sure it was okay, last time you, I thought I interrupted you, I didn't want to do that. You are correct, I, like many of my colleagues, sign the warrant weekly so that our town employees can get paid. It's very important to all of us, that the hard work that our town employees do, they're paid just like anybody else who goes to work and earns a paycheck. I would add to that, that not only do we review it, but our treasurer-collector reviews it before we do. The hardworking people who work here in the finance department review it before it comes to us, so yeah, it is really important that I sign that so that folks can get paid for what they've earned. Would anybody else like to be heard?
Yeah, I don't see anybody behind me, but the final question that I had, Mr. Bendel.
Sure, final question.
Relative to the town meeting warrant in the article relative to the MBTA zoning. During the break, Mr. Slagel was kind enough to speak to me and answer my question, which was, are there any changes to the locations that were previously proposed at a town meeting? And he answered, no, some slight modifications, but the sites are still the same. So, I'm going to tell you why I have a problem with that. A lot of people in town are upset with having a 40B project kind of cram down their throat. And a 40B project, correct me if I'm wrong, please, a 40B project is allowed in town if the town doesn't meet its threshold for the 10% affordable housing threshold. Is that, can we agree that that's accurate or no?
Thank you for that final question.
I didn't even ask it, I just wanted to clarify that, that's right.
Sorry, I thought there was a question.
The reason, the reason why my concern is this, is that there was a particular parcel that's already built, that's a 40B project that has 10% affordable housing. And the MBTA zoning allows for market rate sales or rentals. So if we're rezoning a 40B project to MBTA zoning, and it's going to be market rate zoning, we just pretty much flushed those 10% of the units down the toilet, and then maybe we don't meet our threshold anymore. And so, I would like you to look into that. Maybe you already have, Mr. Bendel, since you voted on that tonight. So since you voted on it tonight, what's your perspective on that, and what type of homework have you done on this particular thing?
Mr. McDonald, thanks so much for your comments, would anyone else like to be heard?
It's a question.
I appreciate it, thank you.
You voted to have a town meeting article for the MBTA zoning.
We voted this evening to.
What type of homework did you do relative to this issue?
Mr. McDonald, this evening, we voted to set the date. Done a lot of homework in my time, yes.
No, no, this particular, this particular, this particular issue, what type of homework have you done, or advisement or consideration have you taken to prevent a problem like this?
The homework that we did was to make sure that this was the best possible date, that we could prepare all the information in a timely manner to notify all residents of the decision they will be asked on December 7th. Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard? Okay, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is announcements, any board members have announcements? I'll kick us off if it's okay, Mr. Kyra?
Oh, no, no, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, thank you, just a couple of quick ones. First of all, I want to give a big hearty congratulations, I think on behalf of all of us, but stop me if I'm going too far. We have a resident who recently, you may have read about this already, earned a silver medal at the Paralympics in Paris, just this past week or so ago, Mr. Alex Flynn, Wilmington resident, currently. Mr. Alex Flynn, Wilmington resident, currently a student at Tufts, competed in the Paralympics in the rowing competition. I didn't get to see it on TV, and I don't even know Mr. Flynn myself, but I thought it was imperative of us to congratulate him and his family, or awfully, and his team on earning the silver medal. Extremely impressive. And if anybody knows Mr. Flynn, we'd love to get in contact with him, to congratulate him, perhaps bring him in so we could celebrate his fantastic accomplishment. So I think that that's just, just wonderful, and we're really, really proud of him and, and all of the, the athletes who represent the United States. So I wanted to mention that. A hearty congratulations. I also wanted to point out that this very, very important flyer arrived in my mailbox today, and this is going to everybody's home in Wilmington, and this is in regards to the MSBA school project that is going on. The vote is on October eighth. This is a very, very important and a very well put together, two-page flyer, front and back. I would strongly encourage all residents over the next, close to a month before the vote, is to get a, get a chance to take a look at this. There's a survey. There's a link to the survey. There's also a QR, QR code to the scan your phone to the survey, and the survey deadline is October first, so still a couple of weeks out. But if you get a chance to let the committee know, the building committee, what your preferred option is, we'd love to hear from you. There's also an email address there with questions or comments or concerns, the Wildwood Project questions at W P S K twelve dot com. There's a phone number that is directed to the manager's office who can enlighten you on more, but this is a really good informative flyer, and I would check the mailbox in the next couple of days. Every resident, every household will be receiving this flyer. So I thought, I wanted to make sure that I drew attention to that. And I think that's what I got. Mr. Kyra.
Mr. Bendel, today late, but it's always worth saying, happy birthday, my friend.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate that. Mr. West.
Thank you. I just wanted to put a shout out to Beth Lawrenson and the, and the, all the election crew and anyone involved in the recent election. You know, we, we had, we listened to a, you know, kind of a speech about elections and election accuracy and all that, and I think that we have a fantastic crew that, that handles our elections, both from the town employee side and the, the people that volunteer are, you know, are in the voting booths with the residents. So I just wanted to put a shout out to everybody that's involved in that process.
Yeah, absolutely. I totally agree, and it's a thankless job, and you are, it's a very difficult job these days to be a town clerk or to work in any type of election, whether you're a volunteer, paid, and really hats off to them. They did a great job at the primary, although it was, you know, fair to say, a small turnout. I think we can all agree that it'll be a much larger turnout come November, and I know that they are preparing every single day to make sure that that election goes well here and fair for everybody. And so again, thank you, Mr. West, because you're absolutely right. Ms. Lawrenson and her staff and the volunteers do an excellent job, and I have the utmost confidence in them. Any other announcements? All right, any new business? Okay, we'll move into important dates. Mr. Slagel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through October sixth, we have the farmer's market at the Town Common on Sundays from ten AM to one PM. On September eleventh and September fourteenth, September eleventh, we have brush drop-off at Old Main Street from eight to two, and on September fourteenth, we have brush drop-off at Old Main Street from nine to four. We have several important dates regarding the school building process. On September seventeenth, the Wildwood School Building Committee will have a regular meeting at Wilmington High School at six thirty PM. On September eighteenth, the next evening, we'll have, the School Building Committee will have a community forum at the Wilmington High School Auditorium at six thirty PM. And on September nineteenth, the Wildwood School Building Senior Forum at the Bazell Senior Center at two o'clock PM. If you know a senior or if you are a senior, please come by. I will be there with the superintendent and with other members of the committee to answer any questions that they have about the process. September twenty-first, we have shredding day at Wildwood School Parking Lot for nine AM till noon. September twenty-third is our next regularly scheduled select board meeting here at Town Hall, room nine, at seven o'clock PM. And then September twenty-fifth, we have the anniversary of Wilmington's incorporation, two hundred and ninety-four years. That means we only have six years to plan for the three hundred. So put it on your calendars. I hope that's not too far ahead, Mr. Kyra. Six years in advance. Put it on your calendars, September twenty-fifth. September twenty-eighth, we have Fall Fest, as was discussed early in the meeting at the Town Common, from ten AM to four PM.
Eleven AM.
Eleven AM.
Just want to make sure. I think we voted that we changed it.
Eleven AM, yes. Thank you.
The Fall Fest is ten AM.
Mm-hmm. The alcohol is eleven.
What happens? I screwed it up, sorry.
It's okay. Come by Fall Fest on the twenty-eighth.
Please do.
And then October eighth, as the chair mentioned, the Wildwood School Building Committee will have a meeting at Wilmington High School at six thirty, where there will be the vote on the preferred option. As was mentioned earlier, it's imperative that you take a look at the flyer that you got in the mail. If you have any questions, you can do any touch to the, via the website or to the town manager's office. We'd be glad to answer any questions you have, and we'll have that vote on the eighth. October fourteenth is Columbus Day. Town offices will be closed. Then October fifteenth, we have a select board meeting here at Town Hall, room nine, at seven o'clock PM. October twenty-fifth, the Carter Lecture Fund will be meeting at Wilmington High School Auditorium at seven PM for the Working Men's Band. And then October twenty-eighth, a select board meeting, Town Hall, room nine, at seven o'clock PM. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I'd also want to acknowledge that we all are well aware that Wednesday is the anniversary of nine eleven, and certainly that's a day that we all pause and reflect and keep those affected in our thoughts and prayers. This evening, our salute to service at the great suggestion from selectman West is going to be given tonight to Mr. John T. Cray, who served in the United States Army as a biological science assistant. He joined in nineteen sixty-one. He was honorably discharged in nineteen sixty-three. He was awarded the Good Conduct Medal. He worked at the U.S. Army Chemical Research and Development Laboratory. John contributed to critical research to the antidotes for the chemical agents. He went on to become a longtime, well-respected faculty member, science teacher at Wilmington High School, where he retired, and unfortunately, he passed away recently. He was laid to rest today. So our condolences to his family and all those students who benefited from his knowledge and wisdom, and we salute him for our service and we thank him for his service. And with that, I will be looking for a motion to adjourn to executive session this evening for the purpose of discussing strategies with respect to collective bargaining as it relates to the International Association of Firefighters, Local thirteen seventy, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A, subsection three, and for the purpose of discussing strategies with respect to collective bargaining as it relates to negotiations with non-union personnel, i.e., finance director, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A, subsection two, and not to return from executive session. Is there a motion? So moved. Thank you. Is there a second? Discussion? All those in favor? It is unanimous. Good night, everyone. Thank you for coming.